Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like to acknowledge we had some entertainment here tonight for the people who were lucky enough to be here. We had the Destrehan High Twin Rivers Jazz Combo. And there standing in the back, I'd like to introduce the members. Mr. Jonathan Dempsey was on the keyboards. Mr. Noe Johnson played the tenor saxophone. And Mr. Montreal Rabby was on alto saxophone. I'd like to thank the teacher, Mrs. Sherry Mala. On behalf of the board, thank you all very much. We were very pleased with the music, and this is the first time we've had this in my 17 years. And I'd like you all to not be a stranger. Anytime you want to come, you're welcome. Thank you. Tonight, we'll have Jalen Kindler, an eighth grade student from JB Martin, who will lead us in a prayer before the pledge. Jalen is a member of the JB Martin Cheer Team, a modest student practicing excellence every day, and is proud to be a JB Martin Cougar. After the prayer, Mr. Art O'Quinn will lead us in the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We come to you today for your blessings, for dedicated teachers and administration who tirelessly work behind the scenes to ensure the success and well-being of our school community. Bless every teacher and administrator with patience and an open mind. Heavenly Father, we come to you today for your courage. We come and ask for your courage and strength to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. We give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Heavenly Father, help us leave this meeting with fulfilling goals we set for the future, for ourselves and others. Let us pass through successfully and be proud of what we achieve here. May we be a shining example of your goodness and trust within. Lord, inspire our thoughts, discussions, and ideas. We seek to work together to ensure that our school is your school. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Amen. States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and available with mercy and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are in attendance, as well as the superintendent and our secretary. Order.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to add an agenda item titled 2024 St. Charles Parish Public Schools Educational Savings Account Opposition Resolution.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add an item that's not on the agenda. This is going to require unanimous vote in favor by the board. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
So the 2024 St. Charles Parish Public Schools Educational Savings Account Opposition Resolution. Whereas there is a renewed and concerted effort at the legislature to pass bills that will give public funds directly to parents to be used for private school tuition and other educational expenses with little or no oversight. And whereas for the past 20 years, the state has failed to fund K-12 public education adequately. And whereas during the same period, the state has continuously placed new accountability demands on both our students and our schools. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public Schools provides free public K-12 education to any student who resides in our districts within the guidelines set by both the state and federal government. And whereas diverting public dollars to private schools and other programs through educational savings accounts, known as ESAs, without fully funding public schools disadvantages our students and our schools. And whereas providing public dollars to ESAs without requiring the same state accountability testing imposed on public school students is irresponsible public policy. Therefore, the St. Charles Parish School Board does hereby express its opposition to legislation creating and/or funding educational savings accounts. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, do hereby direct the superintendent of St. Charles Parish Public School System to deliver a certified copy of this resolution to each member of the legislative delegation of St. Charles Parish, and I move adoption.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt that resolution. Is there any board discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Is that what I said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all opposed. That resolution is approved, and it's very timely. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Quinn. The next item on our agenda is 2.01, the 2024 St. Charles Parish Public Schools Retired Teachers Day Proclamation. And Mrs. Becky Weber is going to read that proclamation?
Yes, it would be my honor.
Right ahead.
Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools retired teachers have devoted their careers and education to training of tens and thousands of Louisiana students. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools retired teachers have provided job and social skills training for adults throughout the state. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools retired teachers have rendered valuable service and diverse leadership roles to their communities and institutions throughout their careers and continue to render such services as retirees. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools retired teachers represent the profession which is given basic responsibility for launching the careers of state and national leaders and for laying the foundation for the welfare of all members of our society. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools retired teachers have ceased lessly to improve the quality of life in this state and nation, often in less adequate circumstances and with less than adequate pay. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools retired teachers represent a tremendous pool of experience and training which remains dedicated to the betterment of our society. Whereas St. Charles Parish retired teachers represent a loyal, patriotic, and concerned citizenry which provides a dedicated and dependable support of leaders in our communities. Now therefore be it resolved, the board, the St. Charles Parish Public School Board, hereby proclaim Thursday, March 21st, as St. Charles Parish Public Schools Retired Teachers Day.
Second.
It's been motioned and second to approve the 2024 Public School Retired Teachers Day Proclamation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask any retired teachers, part of our school system, to please stand and be recognized for the great work that you've done for our school system.
President, I have a few words I would like to say. Having attended several of our teacher retirement meetings, I have seen first what Mr. Billy Peacock and the board has done for our members of this community and what they have done to educate us on policies and issues that represent what we are doing at this point. At this time, I would like to represent, I would like to recognize the board to please stand so that we can give them a hand of recognition as well.
Any more discussion? That proclamation is unanimously approved.
Yeah. Just come back up.
Figure that out. Next item on the agenda is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month Proclamation, and Mrs. Karen Boudreaux will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas autism is a lifelong neurological disorder with current statistics indicating a rate of 1 in 36 children is diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. And whereas autism affects each individual in different ways and can range from very mild to severe, the learning, thinking, and problem-solving abilities of people with ASD can range from gifted to severely challenged, and it knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries affecting both young and old alike. Whereas our understanding of autism has grown tremendously since it was first diagnosed, and there is no known cure for autism. And whereas accurate, early diagnosis, and the resulting appropriate education and interventions are vital to the future growth and development of each student. And whereas the success of students lies in a broad spectrum of treatments and an informed public and community committed to providing support and services to individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to educating all students, including those with autism, by supporting families and celebrating differences. And whereas the dedication of St. Charles Parish Public Schools teachers, support staff, and administrators are vital to the success of our students with autism. And whereas during the month of April, we strive to promote autism awareness, acceptance, inclusion, and self-determination for all, and ensure that each person with ASD is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life and education. Autism Awareness Month emphasizes the need for public awareness to promote acceptance, celebrate the differences, and prioritize the inclusion of autistic individuals. And whereas our school district is committed to providing equitable access to services, events, and activities that support self-determination for all autistic individuals, recognizes the importance of creating spaces that beyond acceptance, provide opportunities for representation and celebration for all autism groups, and seeks to create a socially conscious community that values and celebrates the unique individuals with the ASD community. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish Public School Board does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, and urge students, employees, and the community at large to join advocacy efforts in creating awareness and acceptance for this disorder. I move that we accept this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Autism Awareness Acceptance and Acceptance Month Proclamation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Director of Special Education, Ms. Minnie Van Hoven, to come and say a few words, please.
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent. Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, is a neurodevelopmental condition characterized by a range of challenges in social interaction, communication, and repetitive behaviors. It is a spectrum disorder, meaning that individuals with ASD can display a wide variety of symptoms and abilities, ranging from mild to severe. We currently provide specialized supports and services to approximately 200 students in our district with the exceptionality of autism. Our partnership with the Louisiana Autism Spectrum and Related Disabilities Project allows us to provide ongoing job-embedded supports to our teachers to support our students on the spectrum. During Autism Awareness Month, we encourage teachers, school leaders, and district staff to recognize and embrace the diversity of individuals with ASD, as their unique perspectives and abilities contribute to the richness of human neurodiversity.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hoven.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Any board discussion? The Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month Proclamation is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda, 2.03, 2024 School Library Month Proclamation, and I will ask Mr. Scott Cody to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. 2024 School Library Month Proclamation. Whereas April 2024 has been designated as the 39th Annual National School Library Month. And whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge. And whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop literacy, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards. And whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture. And whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure. And whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression, access to ideas. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, hereby proclaim the month of April as School Library Month, and call upon school administrators, teachers, students, and community members of St. Charles Parish to recognize and support the contributions of school libraries. Mr. President, I move that we accept the 2024 School Library Month Proclamation.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the 2024 School Library Month Proclamation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like Mr. Matt Spitz, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, to come up and say a few words about our librarians.
Thank you, Superintendent Ortling and school board members for proclaiming April as School Library Month. The School Library Month Proclamation underscores the vital role school libraries play in developing literacy skills and in nurturing the minds of our students. Celebrating the significance of school libraries celebrates the opportunities they provide for students to learn, grow, and explore. Today's libraries may look different from those of our youth, but the goal of providing access to a wide variety of resources and digital technologies continues. Thank you for ensuring our students have access to materials that foster a love of reading and a love for learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitz. Any other discussion? The 2024 School Library Month Proclamation is unanimously approved. Our next item is 2.04, the 2024 United Way of St. Charles 5K Bridge Run Proclamation. Mr. Ray Gregson, would you please read this proclamation?
Yes, Mr. President, it'll be honored. The 2024 United Way of St. Charles 5K Bridge Run Proclamation. Whereas United Way of St. Charles is the leader in partnering assets and resources to provide a program of health and human services for St. Charles Parish. And whereas in 1997, the first United Way Bridge Run was held as a fun, community, and family event to raise funds and create a greater awareness for the United Way programs. And whereas in its 27th year, the United Way Bridge Run event draws, on average, more than 2,000 participants. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public School System is eager and excited to participate on Race Day, Saturday, April 13th. And whereas we encourage our employees, along with their family and friends, to join the St. Charles Parish Public Schools team to raise dollars in an effort to assist in providing resources and services to the residents of St. Charles Parish. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board does hereby join together with the United Way of St. Charles and the St. Charles Parish community in promoting the 2024 United Way of St. Charles 5K Bridge Run. Mr. President, I move that we accept the 2024 United Way of St. Charles 5K Bridge Run Proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the 2024 United Way 5K Bridge Run Proclamation. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. First of all, St. Charles Parish Public Schools will have a tent set up for free snow cones after the event, so please, if you're out at the park, we will be serving those nice and cool refreshments. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Tamara Platsmire, Ms. President, to come up from United Way of St. Charles. She's the volunteering events manager to say just a few words.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, so much. We appreciate, the United Way appreciates your support and your partnership for the event. It's always been wonderful partnership between us. I also want to thank our sponsors, which are Shell and Valero. The event's going to take place on Saturday, April 13th. Race starts at 8:30 a.m. We will have transportation to the start line on the East Bank in Destrehan. We're going to run across the bridge regardless of the construction, so if it's slow-moving that day, it'll be because there's runners up there, not because there's construction. Anyway, it's just a really, it's a great event. It gets the community together, and at the same time, it's raising funds for the residents in St. Charles Parish to make it just a better place to live. You know, you get to go out, you get a race t-shirt, you'll get a medal, and then at the same time, you're giving back to your community. You're going to be able to feed kids on the weekends, and you're going to be able to, you know, get books into, you know, residents' homes for early childhood education. And there's so many different things that we do over there at United Way, and I am honored that I get to be a part of the whole thing and I get to plan. So thanks for having me. Please come out. Registration is open. It's on our United Way website. You can go, it's www.uasc.org, so please come out and support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. President, if I could, one of the terms I learned from the United Way staff was while Ida was a disaster, it's the term that really sat with me was silent disasters that occur every single day right here in the community. And then she just mentioned a few of the items, like feeding people, kids, children on the weekend. So silent disasters is what occurs, so supporting them is, I think, huge to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Any other discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The 2024 United Way of St. Charles 5K Bridge Run Proclamation is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is board and superintendent recognition. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Alexis Cannon and the superintendent, and I will pose for a picture with our stars and young stars.
Students. High school students were named to an LHSAA All Academic Composite Team. High school students received superior ratings at the Louisiana State Thesbian Festival. High school students were named to the All District Soccer First Team. Hanville High School's Ashley DeSoto, and she was also named an Offense MVP. Taylor Modere. Destrehan High School student was named to the All Defensive Basketball Team, Charlie Hanville High School student was named to the All District Basketball First Team, RJ Viall Elementary School student is a Louisiana School Boards Association Artwork Yeah, Dusties. Destrehan High School Dusty Darlings placed at the following state and national dance competitions. At the ICU World Dance Team Championship, the team played as World Hip-Hop Champions and World Jazz Silver Medalists. At the UDA National Dance Team Championship, they placed Small Varsity Jazz Silver Medalists, which means they're second in the nation, fourth in the nation for Small Varsity Hip-Hop, fifth in the nation for Medium Varsity Game Day. At the UDA Louisiana Dance, Louisiana State Championship, they placed first in Small Varsity Jazz, first in Medium Varsity Game Day, second in Small Varsity Hip-Hop. At the DTU Louisiana Regional Championship, they were overall Louisiana Regional Grand Champions, first in Medium Varsity Hip-Hop, second in Medium Varsity Jazz. At the UDA Mississippi State Championship, they placed first in Medium Varsity Game Day and second in Hip-Hop. Please direct your attention to the screen to see this phenomenal team in action.
That concludes our board and superintendent's recognition for tonight. At this time, we're going to take a short pause to allow anyone that might want to leave. At this time, you can do so. I want to thank everyone for coming out, and congratulations to all the recipients We're back in order, back to order, and in order. Next item on the agenda is expulsion appeal of student number one. Hold on one second. It's not coming up.
I think we lost connection to the internet.
Lost internet?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I got it. As per LRS 17:416(c)(3b)(4), the school board may review expulsion decision and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designate. The members of the school board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, March 18, 2024, at the request of student number one's mother to consider her request of the board to review the decision to expel student number one and the resulting sanctions. The members of the board need to render a decision to affirm, reverse, modify, or modify the expulsion and sanctions. Is there a consensus?
Mr. President, I move to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of student number one.
There a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ad hoc committee recommendation to affirm the sanctions by the superintendent. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I will abstain from voting on this item since I was not privy to the facts and circumstances related to the discussions during the review.
Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. The motion to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of student number one passes six yes, one no, and one abstention. Next item on the agenda is board minute, meeting minutes from February 5th committee meeting minutes, February 7th, board meeting minutes, the budget review committee meetings from February 19th, February 26th technology committee meeting minutes, and the February 29th board retreat minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the meeting minutes as noted.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve all of those meeting minutes. Any discussion? If not, all, please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the St. Charles Community CARE Center Foundation is seeking to renew the corporate endeavor agreement to use Building B at the E.J. Landry Senior Educational Programs Center. The areas outlined in the agreement are not needed at this present time for board use. The CARE Center Foundation supports the school system's goal and of coordinated services to reduce the barriers to student success. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on March 18th and is aligned with Goal E of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the renewal of the cooperative endeavor agreement by the St. Charles Parish Community Care Center Foundation Incorporated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of the cooperative endeavor agreement by the St. Charles Community Care Center Foundation and the school board. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to just recognize Ms. Lauren Johnson, I believe, is in attendance as the executive director of care, just recognizing her presence.
If there's no other discussion, please cast your vote. That agreement renewal is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is the renewal of lease agreement between the St. Charles Parish School Board and the St. Charles Parish Government Department of Parks and Recreation. The St. Charles Parish Government Department of Parks and Recreation has granted permission to these various school sites, and the Department of Recreation is seeking renewal of this lease.
Mr. President, I move to approve the renewal of the lease agreement between the St. Charles Parish School Board and the St. Charles Parish Government Department of Parks and Recreation.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the school board and the parish Department of Parks and Recreation. Is there any other discussion? If not, please cast your, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. President. Just want to recognize Mr. Dwayne Foray, he's in the audience as well. He's the director of Recreation Department. It's been a, you know, great opportunity to facilitate this agreement with Parks and Recreation and Parish Government.
That lease agreement between the school board and the parish government, Parks and Recreation Department is unanimously approved. Our next item on the agenda is the summer food service program. This item, agenda item, was received at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with Goal E of the board's strategic action plan.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve this summer food service program. Is there any discussion? The summer food service program is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is bid acceptance for Destrehan High School cafeteria serving lines. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with Goal E of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid submitted by Lafayette Restaurant Supply for the Destrehan High School cafeteria serving lines.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the lowest base bid submitted by Lafayette Restaurant Supply at a cost of $790,691. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote.
Looking forward to seeing the finished product.
The Destrehan High School cafeteria serving lines is, that base bid is unanimously accepted. Our next item is 4.07 proposal acceptance for Waste Management Services. And this agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with Goal E, I'm sorry, is aligned with Goal E of the board's strategic action plan. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that we accept a proposal from Waste Connections Bayou Incorporated for the Waste Management Services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the proposal from Waste Connections Bayou INC. for Waste Management Services at a cost of $832.26 per day. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The proposal for Waste Management Services is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is propose, proposal acceptance, acceptance, acceptance of disinfectant program services. Proposals were received from eight different vendors for the disinfectant program, and the proposals were received and evaluated based on the following criteria of cost, qualifications, prior experiences, reference, required information, methodology, and small minority of women, small minority or women-owned businesses. The service agreement is for one year, beginning in July 1st, 2024, and ending in June 30th, 2025, with two optional years at the discretion of the school board. This item- This item was reviewed at the capital improvements committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with goal E of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the proposal from Quality Janitorial and Restoration Services LLC for disinfecting program services.
I'll second, and I'll note that it's at a cost of $111,500.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, please cast your vote. The proposal acceptance for disinfecting program services is unanimously approved. Our next item on the, on the agenda is contracted custodial services agreement. We received proposals from 10 vendors for contracted custodial services on March 5th, 2024. Proposals were reviewed and evaluated by the administration based on the following criteria: qualifications, methodology, required information, costs, prior experience, and references, small minority or women-owned businesses. Evaluations were received, and contracted custodial assignments were assigned by the capital improvements committee as outlined in the attached document.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the contracted custodial services as recommended by the superintendent.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the assignments of contracted custodial services from the administration. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to note that the cost of $1,269,669.21 is all of the custodial accepted here, all the facilities.
And that's the total for nine different sites, I believe?
Correct.
Right. Is there any more discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The contracted custodial services agreement is unanimously approved. Our next item is ESAR Employee Retainment Plan. The district receive an allocation of funds through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Program, ESAR II and ESAR III. As a condition of the program, the district was required to expend all funds by September of 2024. District administration met to conduct a cost-benefit analysis of all the ESAR-related temporary employee positions. The attached ESAR Employee Retainment Plans outlines the positions of the district and recommends transitioning to permanent, permanent employee positions. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ESAR Employee Retainment Plan at an investment of $865,200. Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the ESAR Employee Retainment Plan. Is there any discussion?
I just want to add that I do appreciate the superintendent's commitment to making sure that we're going to be constantly monitoring the effectiveness of these positions that we're adding on, and look forward to seeing those, those measurements each year as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Any, any other board discussion?
I just want to make one point. Is this, this is not really an add-on for the benefit of the public. We're not adding on staff. We are retaining staff, which is a difference. The staff here was already in the district but paid for through federal funds that we will no longer be receiving. The district will now fund those positions, but we're not adding additional staff.
Any other discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The ESAR Retainment, where is it? Employee Retainment Plan is unanimously approved, and it will cost us $865,200. Next item on the agenda are personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the school board, the public schools. The Human Resource Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed Monday and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we receive the personnel items as presented to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second to receive the personnel items as presented to the board. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The personnel items as presented to, as presented to the board is unanimously received. Our next item on the agenda is 4.12 Board Policy and Procedure 4.6.3C Pre-Employment Criminal History Record Information. This agenda item was received at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th for a first reading and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Board Policy and Procedure 4.6.3C Pre-Employment Criminal History Record Information checks for a first reading. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Board Policy and Procedure 4.6.3C for a first reading. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The pre-employment criminal history record information checks is unanimously approved for a first reading. This item will come back at a later meeting for a second reading and adoption, and that will probably be next month. Next item, 4.13 Revisions to Board Policy 3.3.3 Gifts and Bequests for a First Reading. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the recommended revisions to Board Policy 3.3.3 Gifts and Bequests for a first reading. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Board Policy 3.3.3. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The revisions to Board Policy 3.3.3 is unanimously approved for a first reading. Next item, 4.14 Revisions to Board Policy and Procedure 7.2 Complaints from the Public, second reading and adoption. This agenda item was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the board on Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, and is aligned with goals A and C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the recommended revisions to Board Policy and Procedure 7.2 Complaints from the Public for a second reading and adoption. Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin', second by Mr. Cody. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The revisions to Board Policy and Procedure 7.2 Complaints from the Public for a second reading and adoption is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.15 Head Start Budget for Fiscal Year 2025. The board reviews supplemental allocations of funds to support the Head Start Program at the board retreat held on February 29th, 2024. The Head Start Budget for the fiscal year ending, ending June 30th, 2025 is proposed. This agenda item is aligned with goal A of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the budget, I'm sorry, I move approval of the Head Start Budget at the cost of $1.1 million.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the $1.1 million board supplement to the FY25 Head Start Budget. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The, the proposed fiscal year 25 Head Start Budget is unanimously approved. Next item is 4.16 Request for Proposals for Hardware Repair Services. Sorry. This agenda item was reviewed at the Technology Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic plan.
I move that we approve the requests for proposals for hardware repair services.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the request for proposals for hardware repair services. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The request for proposals for hardware repair services is unanimously approved. Moving right along, 4.17 Ancillary Compensation Modification for Fiscal Year 2425. Modifications to a number of the district's ancillary compensation provisions are recommended based on a procedural review and discussion at the board retreat on February 29th. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting on Monday, March 18th, and is aligned with goals C and D of the board's strategic action, action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ancillary compensation modifications for fiscal year 202425 as presented.
A second.
Have a motion to approve the ancillary compensation modification for FY24-25 as presented at an approximate cost of $600,000 per year. Is there any board discussion? If none, please cast your vote. Item 4.17 Ancillary Compensation Modifications for FY2425 is unanimously approved. Our next item, 4.18 Accounts Payable for the Month of February 2024 at a cost of $6,288,289.33. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting on March 18th, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of February 2024 with a breakdown of general fund cost $3,668,846.5. Special revenue funds, $1,092,475.33. Capital improvement, capital projects funds, $2,128,967.5. And with a grand total of $6,288,289.33.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable for the month of February 2024. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The accounts payable for the month of February 2024 item is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is 4.19 Phase One Department Reorganization Plan. Excuse me, one second. Lean Frog was a contractor, contractor who was hired to conduct a comprehensive, comprehensive organizational review of the schools and provide insight and recommendations to the superintendent to improve the department's structure, reduce inefficiencies, align staff and processes, and to optimize resources to serve students and staff better. Due to an impending retirement, the Phase One Department Reorganization Plan should be implemented. This plan aligns with recommendations made by Lean Frog and is evaluated by the superintendent as being in the district's best interest.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Phase One Department Reorganization Plan with approximately, approximate savings of $42,000.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Phase One Department Reorganization Plan. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The Phase One Department Reorganization Plan is unanimously approved. Our final, no, it's not our final. Next item is standing committee reports. If the chair of any standing committee has a report and wishes to present it to the board, you can do so now.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee consisting of Mr. Al Sufferin', Ms. Karen Boudreaux, and myself met on Monday, March 18th. We discussed three items: the ancillary compensation, accounts payable for the month of February 2024, and a department reorganization plan, all of which were approved this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Anyone else?
Mr. President, the Legislative Committee met on Monday night, and those members are myself, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Boudreaux. We had Lenny Kapowski with Magnolia Strategic Consultants in attendance and provided an update on legislation that's happening in Baton Rouge that affects our school district. I'd also like to mention Ms. Regina McMillan is involved with us as well in this legislative session, and we're trying to keep track of all the bills that are being placed that could directly affect our district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn. Anyone else? Anyone else?
The Technology Committee met on Monday, the 18th, consisting of myself, Mr. Ray Gregson, and Mr. Scott Cody. Only one item came to the Board table tonight to request proposals for hardware repair services, and it passed.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreaux. Anyone?
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Alexander, and Mr. Cody, held a meeting on Monday, March 18, and we covered four items. All four of those items were on the agenda for the full Board to consider during this meeting, and they were approved. Those items were the ESER Employee Retainment Plan, the personnel items were received as presented to the Board, Board Policy and Procedure 4.6.3C, Pre-Employment Criminal History Record Information Checks for a First Reading, and revisions to Board Policy 3.3.3, Gifts and Bequests for a First Reading. And that concludes my report.
Members of the Board, Superintendent, the Capitol Improvements Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. John Smith, and Mr. Ray Gregson, met on March 18, and there were 10 items on our agenda, seven of which, which came before the Board tonight and were, and were approved. The first item was the St. Charles Community Care Center Foundation Agreement, Corporative Endeavor Agreement, which was renewed tonight. The second item was renewal of the lease agreement between the, the school board and the parish government, Department of Parks and Recreation, which was also approved. The summer food service program was the third item, was approved tonight. The fourth item was bid acceptance for Destrahan High School cafeteria serving lines was approved tonight. The fifth item was the Safe Schools Program update by Mr. Kate Rogers and Mr. Dustin Vinette, and that was, that item was for committee meeting only. The long-range major maintenance, capital improvements, principals' capital improvements, and safe school capital improvements requests were presented to the Board in this, that item. Those items were for committee meeting only. The seventh agenda item was engineer selections for the Destrahan and Hornville High Schools' stadium handrails installation project, and that was also for committee meeting only. The eighth item was proposal acceptance for Waste Managers, Waste Management Services. The ninth was the proposal acceptance for Disinfectant Program Services. And the tenth item was contracted custodial services agreement, and all of those items were approved tonight. That concludes my, my report. Our next item and final item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The St. Charles Parish Public School System is seeking staff achievement award nominees. One staff member from eight categories will be selected for recognition at the Staff Achievement Award Program in April. The deadline to submit a nomination is Monday, March 25, 2024. Nomination forms are available on the district's website. For more information, contact Public Information Department. Please join me in recognizing the employees who demonstrate that you and I, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Each spring, the Louisiana Department of Education administers computer-based LEAP 2025 assessments in grades 3 through 8. The LEAP 2025 will be administered from May 6 through May 10. Schools will send their testing schedules as the testing dates draw near. High school students enrolled in LEAP courses will take these assessments from May 8 through May 10. All high school students not taking LEAP assessments will participate in asynchronous learning on these days. The high schools will communicate more information. Don't hesitate to get in touch with your child's school for further information about LEAP 2025 assessments and schedules. And finally, I'd just like to respectfully thank the Board for their special consideration of Phase 1 of the district's reorganization plan, where it will appoint Mr. John Rome as the new Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Ms. Teresa Brown as the Executive Director of HR, and Mr. Kate Rogers as the Executive Director of Safety, Athletics, and Ancillary Services. I certainly appreciate their leadership, but I also very much appreciate the Board's consideration of these changes to make sure that we continue to move in a very positive direction for this school system. So, thank you. If you'd please stand and be recognized. Thank you. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
I move to adjourn.
Has a motion to adjourn.
Second?
And there's a second. If there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned.